Let me pounce, let me pounce that a little harder. Everybody there? All right, good evening. Workshop council meeting for City Coppers Cove held October twenty first, twenty twenty five is called or ordered at five oh two P M. Metis Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancy.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Sean Alzona. John Hale.
Here.
Dale Tredway.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right, we, a quorum is present, so we move to item C, announcements.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
None at this time.
Ryan?
Uh, yes, sir. The first one is, it's, uh, early voting is open. Um, now while Coppers Cove does not have a, uh, particular item on the ballot, um, our residents and voters should go vote, so please go vote. Uh, also, um, this past Saturday, uh, just want to say a huge thank you to K C C B and Anna Rodriguez, uh, who put on a phenomenal, uh, eco harvest event out at Ogletree Gap, so well done. And then, uh, this Saturday is, uh, at four P M. at City Park, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department is hosting the following festival. Please be cautious when you're in the area of City Park for this event. There are a lot of people who attend, and so there will be a lot of traffic and a lot of children out there. Thank you.
All right.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, the Friends of Central Texas State Veteran Cemetery Cemetery, um, welcomes, um, everyone to participate in either the wreath preparation, which is Saturday, November twenty second at ten A M., wreath laying ceremony, Saturday, November twenty ninth at ten A M., and the wreath retrieval Saturday, excuse me, January tenth at ten A M. For more information, you can go ahead and visit W W W dot wreaths for vets dot org. Thank you.
No announcements. All right. Uh, let's see, there's no public recognition for this meeting, so we move to item E, workshop items.
E one, review and discussion of the twenty twenty five City of Coppers Cove Citizen Engagement and Priority Assessment. Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager.
Mayor and Council, uh, just let you know, we're, we're going to review the, uh, citizen survey, but I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, who really, uh, is the point person from staff that, uh, coordinates with our consultant on this, so Kevin.
Thank you. Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, and City Council. So as Ryan discussed, we're going to talk about the, um, results of the sitting, Citizen Engagement Priority Assessment. So we have Will Sainte-More. He's the Executive Director with Cobalt Community Research, um, on a Zoom call, so we're going to see if we can hear, uh, Will.
Good evening.
Loud and clear. Do that one more time, Will.
Good evening, everybody, it's good to see you.
That's perfect, okay, Will. All right, so we have Will with us. We've worked with Will for, gosh, probably fifteen years on different surveys. Um, so the way we're going to do this is I'm going to pull the PowerPoint presentation up on the screen here, and I'm going to just zoom through the slides as Will, uh, gives the presentation and background, um, and results of the survey. So Will, if you would just kind of hit next slide whenever you're ready to go, for me to go to the next one.
And Mayor and Council, as we're going through this, uh, by all means, just speak up if you have questions in those particular areas, those slides. Um, we, we have plenty of time to go through this, so, uh, just make, don't wait on your questions.
Okay, Will, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, sounds great. So everyone can see the, uh, presentation up on the screen?
Yes, sir.
All right, wonderful. Well, good evening again, everyone. Um, I will go through the report, and if you have questions, like I said, go ahead and ask away. So, uh, slide two is just some information on Cobalt Community Research. We're a nonprofit. We work around the country, uh, mainly with small and medium sized communities, doing the kind of work that you're looking at now. Uh, next slide is why research matters. A number of really good reasons to do so. I'm not going to, to read them all, but really the bottom line at the bottom is it, it is something that builds trust. It helps you, uh, ensure that you're in tune with what the community overall is interested in, what their priorities are, what their perceptions are, uh, because sometimes you, you might hear from a few folks that are particularly brave, or particularly eloquent, or particularly passionate, but it's helpful to have this kind of data, just to put all of that in perspective and make sure that you've got this one additional piece as you're making the decisions that you're making. Next slide, please. So this is the bottom line. The first two slides are just getting to the chase. So when we look at your scores, uh, last time we ran this was back in twenty twenty one, um, and your scores have gone up since then, uh, generally, uh, usually within the margin of error. Uh, there was a little bit of softening here and there, and we'll go over that as we, we go through the presentation. But in twenty twenty one, your A C S I score was a forty eight. That rose three points in twenty twenty five to a fifty one. And I do want to mention that these are not, uh, these are not grades, so it's not a grading scale. This is more of a, uh, it's just a numeric scale from zero to one hundred. Texas overall for similarly sized communities scored a sixty four, and it went up to a sixty six in twenty twenty five. So you guys gained a little bit on the benchmarks as well. So there are a series of questions that have more leverage, more impact on your overall satisfaction, and the outcome metrics that are tied to it. And in the model that we use, the outcome metrics are things like people remaining in the community, recommending it to others, encouraging businesses to start up in the community, uh, volunteering, those types of things. So the better job you do in these areas, the more likely people are to do those kind of outcome metrics. So in twenty twenty five, you can see the top five listed there, city government management, tax, taxes, economic health, image, parks and rec, compared to the twenty twenty one drivers. Uh, one of the things that we saw as we dove into the data is that your economic health scores, in particular, have had a, a pretty significant impact. So just as the economy does its usual ups and downs, uh, that is something that, that had a pretty significant impact on your scores. Uh, when we look at your parks and recreational services, Hills Cove and Library, we did see an uptick in use, uh, which is great. We also saw an uptick in those scores as well. Police services, fire, street, and parks are the things that folks identified as the most important. This is pretty consistent with what we see with other communities. Uh, when we looked at some of the specific projects that you've got going on, uh, improved maintenance and appearance of properties downtown and on Business One Ninety, uh, infrastructure to balance travel by modality, enhanced work with developers to meet city goals, all of those had a lot of support. A majority also support upgrades to city parks and downtown improvements, and also a majority are willing to provide some level of new funding to do so, which is, which is good. Um, I've been working with some communities lately where they want improvements, but they're not willing to pay for them. So, uh, a little bit different in this situation. A plurality of folks, uh, wanted to see some additional Christmas decorations, uh, some sidewalk improvements and some biking and walking trails. I say plurality because it wasn't a majority of folks, but those are the things we gave them a, a basically a wish list. These are the things that popped up the most. There's a number of questions where we had open ended comments, and when we look at the themes, uh, some of the things that come out is that residents would like to see more activities. They really want to stay in Coppers Cove more often, and they feel like they need to go outside of the city, uh, to do some of these activities, to get some services and various kinds of stores. Uh, they, they really do want to strengthen the local economy, and they want to keep their dollars in the Cove as much as possible. What asks about growth drivers, why are people moving into the city? Uh, they talked about housing affordability, the availability of houses, military connection, and just a general perception that it is, uh, quieter and safer. So you've got a bunch of tools. This is a summer report. There's a lot more data that you've got available. Uh, one of them is that you've got detailed questions broken down by demographic groups and basically thermal mapped, and I'll talk about that in a second, but that's probably the most important thing, is you start digesting the information in the survey. You've got the comparison scores, uh, for Texas, the South, and across the nation to give you some context in terms of how you're doing. And then there's also a number of, uh, local government, uh, or non-local government scores that are available through the American Customer Satisfaction Index, the A C S I. So if you wanted to look at various industries or, or, uh, agencies or specific companies, that is something that you can do as well. So next slide, we should be on methodology. So we distributed the surveys to a random sample of two thousand voters, and that was over the summertime. We did it in two waves. An initial wave went out, and then a second wave went out to those who hadn't responded. Uh, there's also an opportunity for folks who weren't part of the sample to respond as well. And this is a little bit different than what we've done in prior years because we've gone off the, uh, utility bills in the past. So this is something that should, that's a little bit more representative. And we actually saw in the results that you, you have a bit more participation by some of the groups that were a bit underweighted in the past. Um, all of the mailed surveys, uh, had postage paid envelopes for people to respond. People could respond either using that envelope, or they could hop online, use a unique I D. number that we use to, to make sure that people don't respond multiple times, and then manage their reminders. Uh, we had a valid response from five hundred seventy six residents in twenty one. That response was five thirty eight, so that's a nice jump in terms of the kind of response that we're seeing. Uh, when we looked at the random sample, um, we have a, a margin of error of about plus or minus five percent. And then we also had the, uh, the non-sample responses that were put in. We didn't co-mingle those in the score, so as we go through the, the charts, you're just going to see the charts based on the random sample, because mathematically, those are the folks that we can say are within the margin of error. Um, all of the folks who are not part of the sample, there is a line in the cross tabs that allows you to see how they responded as well. Typically, it's right in line with the rest of the folks, but there are some variations because people can self-select whether they participated or not. And sometimes there's interest in, in library groups or park groups to, to get the word out and to get people responding to a survey. So this is a way of balancing that a bit. One of the questions that always comes up is for a national survey, or for a certain community our size, uh, did we have enough responses? And to do a full national survey, to get plus or minus five percent, you need about three hundred eighty four responses to reflect all three hundred thirty million of us. Uh, so you're in, in really good shape from a data standpoint. Next slide, looking into the detail. This is a tiny little slice of the cross tabs. Uh, if you've looked at these in the past, you know that they are vast and they cover lots of different areas. But I wanted to talk about, uh, what are the components of this? And one is that every question in the survey has its own column. So you can see utilities and drinking water and trash collection and all that marching across the top. Then on the columns, on the far left hand side, you can see your historic scores, and then we drop down into each of the individual demographic groupings. So by area, north, south, central, west, uh, by residence, how long people have lived in the community, and there's a bunch of others as well that are available to you. If you see that things are pretty consistently blue or red, that means regardless of score, people tended to have the same experience, they have the same priorities. Uh, they were acting in a, a pretty consistent way when it came to responding to the survey. When you see check rings, so a mix of the blue and the red, that means that there were some differences in the demographic groups. Uh, we put a little asterisk by some of them, so if you see one year or fewer, there's a little asterisk there. That means that there were fewer than thirty people in that group, and sometimes you get a bit more volatility in terms of how people responded. Uh, so we do like to flag that, yet sometimes you do get some outliers there. But generally, this is a good tool to understand, you know, how's the community feeling? And when you're out there in the Milk Isle and somebody, uh, is talking to you about, uh, various things going on within the city, uh, if you know that from a group that might have responded low on a particular question, instead of just asking generally, you know, how are things going and what can be improved? You can really zero in specifically on folks like them and say, okay, you know, people like you, uh, marked playgrounds lower than, than others. What are some specific improvements we can make in that area? So it's a great tool for council when you're out in the community to really have much more focused surgical kind of questions to follow up and have those kind of conversations. All right, let's drop down to slide ten, which is comparing twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. If you go all the way over to the right hand side, you can see the change, twenty one to twenty five, and you can see how those scores, uh, shifted. Uh, there's a little bit of rounding between the, uh, column for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty five, so if it looks a little bit off, it is because of the rounding. Uh, but you can see generally how those have moved. For the most part, it's the yellow arrow because they were within the margin of error. Uh, if it is something that's highlighted in green, that means it's one of the five areas that we identified that were the most strongly connected to overall satisfaction. So those are the things that have the most bang for the buck of moving your score up or down. And for the most part, those have gone up. The only exception there is the economy, which you can see that one red arrow pointing downward, uh, so it, it did have a significant effect on your scores. Next slide, your community A C S I. So this is your overall American Customer Satisfaction Index score, so overall satisfaction. And you can see your scores, current scores in dark blue. Twenty one is in the lighter blue, and then you can see the, uh, Texas scores in red, the southern scores in kind of the orangish, beigeish color, and then the U. S. scores in green. The lighter colors for all of those are representing the, uh, communities that have twenty five thousand to a hundred thousand people in them. Um, more of the, the direct comparisons to you. So when we look at community satisfaction and comparison with the ideal, you can see that you're a bit below the benchmarks, but you are gaining ground on them as well. Next slide. These are the outcome behaviors that I talked about, so recommending the city, remaining, living in the city five years from now, so on. Uh, you can see that your scores, um, did drift down a smidge. Uh, you're a little bit below the, the benchmarks, but I think as you continue on the road that you're on, you're going to see some, some steady gains. All right, next slide is just explaining how to read the bubble charts, and for those of you who have been through Cobalt Things before, you know we use a lot of them. Let's go to the next slide. And what this is doing on the vertical is it's re, is showing how folks rated different dimensions of the community on a scale of zero to one hundred. You can see that scale on the left hand side is actually zero to eighty. We zoomed in just so you can see the difference in the points a little bit more readily. Across the horizontal is the relationship to overall satisfaction of those outcome metrics. So the further to the right things are, the stronger that relationship. And this is comparing movement from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. So the N. that has the, the number in it, the label, that's your twenty twenty five score. So if we look in the bottom right quadrant, we can see twenty six, and twenty six is city management overall. You can see that's a pretty strong driver, and it's gone up in terms of your performance. When you see nineteen just above it, uh, that's taxes, so that one has also improved. Forty four, parks and recreation, that moved up quite a bit, and it also became much more of a driver. And, uh, thirty five, just below that, uh, thirty five is the economy overall, and you can see that one is also a driver. It's over on the right hand side, and that's the one that really dropped. Things that are over on the left hand side, you can see twelve, which is utilities, and fifty eight, which is public safety overall. Um, those are in that quadrant, not because they're unimportant, they're actually very important to folks. Uh, but they are kind of optimized from the perspective of driving satisfaction of those outcome behaviors. So they're in a good place, and, uh, uh, from an, uh, from a satisfaction standpoint, they don't necessarily need to be improved. Down in the bottom left quadrant, you can see that orange line, transportation overall, and you can see that one slid down, and it's also moving over to the right pretty quickly. So that's one to keep an eye on, and we'll go into that one in a little bit more detail here, uh, in a few minutes. Next slide is image overall, so this is a community brand, and you can see that you're below the benchmarks, but in many cases, uh, you're, you're bumping up a bit. Um, or staying pretty much level from a statistical standpoint. So if we're looking at scores that are the highest, we see things like a safe place to live. That scored really well. Enjoyable place for senior citizens, that one also scored really well. If we're looking at the areas that are the softest, we can see physically attractive and great curb appeal. That's one that dropped, although it did go up a little bit, uh, compared to twenty twenty one. And, and you can see the, uh, enjoyable place for people to visit, and enjoyable place for young adults are also scores that are a bit softer, uh, than, than the others. Dropping down to the next page, looking at the scatter chart for those, you can see that these are pretty impactful. Most of them cross that center line over into the right quadrant, uh, fifty six being the one with the most impact, and fifty six is growing responsibly. And so there's some, some open ended questions that can shed some light on that. Next slide, transportation overall. So you can see the overall score dipped a bit over on the left hand side. Road maintenance scores improved. Traffic congestion, really about the same, public transportation weight down a little bit. Accommodation for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, that one went up a little bit. When we look at the next slide, transportation infrastructure, we can see that for the most part, these are over on the, uh, left hand side, so not as strong of a driver. Number two, though, is road maintenance, and while that's been improving, it is a stronger driver. So that's something that, uh, is, as far as transportation elements to improve, that's the one that has the most bang for the buck. Next slide, looking at utilities. Overall, pretty similar to what we saw on twenty two, drinking water quality. We see a, a pretty significant drop there. The other scores are pretty much the same as they were, uh, back in twenty twenty one. It's trash collection, uh, brush and bulk disposal, recycling collection, billing and collecting, billing and collecting, and special collection events, pretty much the same as they were last time. Now, the last two, billing and collecting and the special collections, uh, those are marked, um, you, you don't see the benchmarks because they're not part of our regular annual benchmarking process, so these are custom questions to you. Next slide. Popping those onto the cross tab, you can see all of these are to the left of that center line. Eighteen being the one that's moved the most, uh, and that's your special collection events. Sorry, that's not eighteen, that's thirteen, that's your drinking water. Next slide, taxes. Here, you're above the benchmarks. We saw this in the comments as well, that, that you're a more affordable community to live in, the housing's more affordable, the, the cost of living generally is, is more affordable than other communities in your region, and, uh, you're continuing to improve in that area. Next slide, local management. Uh, you can see those scores below the benchmarks, but for the most part, they're inching up. So particularly strong when we're looking at having a website that meets needs, uh, providing opportunities for, uh, for, for the, uh, residents to participate in city decisions, also marked high. We can see the communicating effectively with the community, that, that's marked higher. Um, areas that are marked a bit lower, spending dollars wisely is the one that came up, and we see this with every community that we work with. And often that's a real challenge because from a communication standpoint, uh, you don't talk about it too much in terms of the nuts and bolts of how you address, uh, making those kind of decisions of, of where the dollars go. And when you do address them, residents' eyes glaze over. So it's not something that they're super interested in, but they say, hey, it's government, and government always spends money poorly, so they always mark you down. Um, but that is a challenge from a, a perception standpoint that you'll want to spend a little bit of time looking at. Next slide is giving you the, the impact of those city management scores. You can see all of them are over on the right hand side, so the, these all do matter. These all have a lot of impact, so these are things that you'll want to continue to look at. Particularly way down at the bottom, you can see thirty, spending dollars wisely. And as I mentioned, that's often a communications challenge, uh, to, to bring that score up. Next slide, looking at the economy. Uh, you can see that those scores, uh, have pretty much dropped in most of the areas, with the exception of the availability of housing, which has gone up. But quality of jobs, availability of jobs, those are your, your two low scoring areas, and those are ones that have dipped down compared to twenty twenty one. Next slide, looking at the economy. Uh, you can see again, all of those, almost all of those are sliding down into the right. So that accounts for a lot of the reason that your score, uh, didn't go up more than it, it should have. Next slide, parks and rec. You can see those across the board have gone up, uh, pretty even as far as what the scores are for each of those areas. And if we go to the next slide, looking at the bubble chart, you can see all of those slopes are going up into the right. And this means that your parks and rec are actually becoming one of the jewels in your community. These are things that are drawing people in, these are having a positive impact on overall satisfaction, uh, and essentially do that more because this is a particular area that, that matters to your residents, uh, and is going to have some payoffs for you. Next slide is public safety. Pretty much the same as what we saw in twenty twenty one, a little bit of softening in a couple of areas as far as crime control and the, the ambulance, and animal control. We saw code compliance pop up a little bit compared to twenty twenty one. Next slide is looking at the, uh, scatter on those, and most of them are off to the right, with the exception of sixty three, and sixty three is municipal court. So that's something that is more impactful and has dipped down since twenty twenty one. The next slide is looking at, uh, some open ended questions. And when we ask these questions, uh, what we do is the words that come up most often are the words that are the largest, and then we take a look at what are the themes around those words. So when we look at this, you know, basically, we're, we're trying to find out what else people wanted to share with the city, things that, that you guys needed to know. And first is around the area of quality of life in community spaces. So, as I'd mentioned at the introduction, people want more reasons to stay in town. They want more trails, live music, events, all of these kind of things. Uh, they feel that Coppers Cove doesn't have, have as much as some of the other communities in the area, but people really, really do want to stay in town and, and spend time doing those kind of things. Next, as we look at infrastructure, safety, and services, so there are a number of comments about roads and sidewalks, um, water quality. All of those are areas that came out as frustrations fairly often as you go through the comments. Road construction, uh, was a concern as it means you've got a lot of orange barrels and closures and all that kind of thing. Uh, there's also some concern about animal control, code enforcement. Uh, park programs had, had some mixed comments, so there's some opportunities there to find improvements, but there's also some recognition of the things that you're doing better, and entertainment, uh, beyond fast food and donut chops again. Next slide, we asked them what are the most important services and programs that the city offers? And the ones that came up to the top are the ones that we see often with communities. So you have the, the police services, fire and E M. S., um, street maintenance, and the city parks and recreation. Those are really your big four. If we wanted to go to number five, public library and street lighting are really the ones that, that round that out. Next slide, one of the things that we often ask, particularly as the economy starts to get a little bit more iffy, is, um, if there are not enough funds to maintain service levels, what kind of budgetary actions do you support? And we give options like eliminating the services, reducing service levels, raising fees and taxes, outsourcing. And really, there wasn't one that really jumped out. All of these are, you know, ten to twenty percent in terms of the folks responding. Overall, you know, the majority of folks or the near majority of folks aren't sure what to do with it. Um, so that means essentially that there's a lot of openness there. Uh, they're, they're looking to the city council to provide some information and provide some guidance in terms of what is the best path forward if there aren't enough funds available to cover the things that you're doing today. Next slide. Uh, we asked about increasing planning efforts, and would they like to see, uh, more effort in those areas or not as much effort in those areas? So if we look at enhanced work with developers, fifty four percent of folks said yes. That's definitely something that, that they would like to see you do more of, particularly to think about the growth and, and, you know, the things that you're experiencing, some of the growing pains. The implement of transportation utility fee for street maintenance, um, twenty three percent said yes, forty percent said no, and thirty six percent really wanted more information, uh, because they didn't know which way to go on that one. Improve appearance and maintenance of properties downtown, and on One Ninety, a resounding yes. So sixty eight percent said yes, very few people said no, and a few folks wanting more information. And similarly, infrastructure to balance travel by vehicle, uh, foot, uh, wheelchair and bicycle. Um, that's also something that received a very strong response, that people want to see more of that. Next slide. We're asking about the growth, and we're really wanting to understand what are the reasons that people are choosing to move to Coppers Cove? And the big things that came out, first of all, affordability in housing, so lower home prices, your taxes are lower. Uh, there's property that's available, nice housing that people can move into. Second thing is military, no surprise there, you've got a lot of folks, uh, that are being relocated, um, or they're retiring, and so they, they are coming to Coppers Cove for those reasons. And the last reason is really the, the, the city character, so people feel safe, uh, they like the small town feel of it. Uh, they like that, that the Cove is quieter, um, and just, you know, good schools, good amenities, there, there's a lot of things that they like. So even though your scores are, are a bit lower compared to the benchmarks, the folks that are, do live in town, while they certainly have plenty of, plenty of things that they talk about improving, they do like the city. And there's a number of, of nice things that they say, and if you're feeling beat down, you know, going through the open ended questions, uh, number twenty, uh, is something that'll, uh, really help you see kind of the other side of the coin than you get sometimes when you're just asking what you can do better. Next slide is looking at potential future projects. We had a few things listed here. The ones that really jumped out, uh, was support upgrades, uh, to all city parks, so walking trails, athletic fields, and so on. So that was almost eighty percent of folks wanted to see that going into the future. Support downtown improvements also very strong, that's a seventy percent. So th- those are really your two hu- So those are really your two huge things, everything else is really secondary compared to that. Next slide. We're asking about amenities in general, just to to add or enhance their experience in the city. The things that that popped up, Christmas decorations, interestingly, popped up quite a bit. But also sidewalk repairs and walking trails, those were also up in the the low thirties. And also the railroad underpass to improve traffic flow also was something that came up as being pretty strong. Next slide, amount to pay per month. One of the questions that we ask is, you know, based based on your options, would you be willing to pay a little bit more? And how much would you be willing to pay to implement these kind of improvements? And often we see people saying, no, I don't want to pay anything. But in your case, we had about fifty-two percent saying that they would be willing to pay five, ten or fifteen dollars per month to see some of these improvements take root. And we only had about thirty-nine percent of folks saying no. So again, so some nice direction there that people are willing to invest in their community. Next slide, asking how people want to receive information from the city. Mail and email were really the top two. And then the last slide is just talking about how to improve the scores going forward. This is something that our staff has has worked on. The first step, the measurement step, you've completed that. The second step is to really take some time and for the council and for leadership to think about why did people respond the way they did? What are the what are the handful of things that we'd like to move the needle on? And what are the specific things that we can do to improve those scores going into the future? Step three is broadening the conversations, taking those ideas and going out to staff, going out to the community, having some workshops and say, okay, here's here's some of the things that we're trying to improve. Here are some of the ideas that we came up with, what's missing? And what are the things that would really have the most impact on you? And that starts to give you your your marching orders, a much clearer sense of the things to focus on. Fourth step, looking at who are the people that are actually going to implement these changes, make sure they have the tools and the training to do it. Step five, that's really project management. So what are the deliverables, what's the timeline, how are you going to measure progress so that the the momentum is is both seen and continued? Okay, so that is the summary presentation. Like I said, you've got a a lot more information that you can go through. But at this point, I'll stop talking and give you an opportunity to questions that you've got.
Counsel. Comments?
Yes, Mayor, I got to ask a comment and a question. The first thing, I understand the numbers going up and down, but on transportation, is there any reason why the numbers went down? Because I know hop increased a lot of the ride shares this past year.
Mayor. Kevin and I talked about this, we we kind of talked through it with Will as well. We do feel that one of the main drivers for that is a lack of awareness and education, even knowing what the hop is doing. But here's the other thing is, we don't have the larger green buses driving around town anymore, so they're not visible. What is visible, and only if you pay attention, are the commercial indistinct white buses that have the hop written on it relatively small compared to the vehicle. And so I I think a lot of people think we don't have public transportation anymore. And with the effort that the hop is doing to rebrand and their vehicles will be highly visible as they're going down the road. I think at least that impression will change.
Okay, thank you.
You also have to understand that some of that transition with with the hop was taking place right when they were doing this survey. So there was, you know, you didn't have a clear cut one way or the other because of the transition that was going on. Anybody else? Okay.
Do you have a closing comment?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I have several closing comments, actually. First, I just want to say thank you to Will. He has been a very helpful resource to our community. A number of things in our community have changed based on your policy directions, counsel. Just looking at where some of the changes have greatly changed, you know, we've seen Parks and Recreation with a relatively significant improvement from one survey to another. And that is because you, as council, have made policy decisions in the past, over the past several years, to begin really improving our parks. And we've seen that, we've we've got coverings over playgrounds, we've we've got a more functional basketball court out at City Park. We've done new lights out at the ball fields, the duck pond looks so much better. We we have a hashtag Cove sign out there. I mean, there there have been a lot of things that have changed with Parks Rec. And the survey is indicating that your policy investments in that area are paying off, thank you, Mayor, are are paying off. But it also is is a great illustration that whatever you, as the council, decide to focus on with this next survey that is now complete, as long as you have a strong focus in those areas, we will see improvements and changes as long as those decisions that you make are efficient and well-publicized and noted and shared with the community that we're going down this effort to be responsive. The one of the comments at the front, and Kevin, can we go to slide five? Well, one of the comments up front is, and it was not on slide five, but it was in that that word chart, is more places to stay. There are more reasons to stay in Copper's Cove. And this this slide right here of slide five really kind of talks about a number of those things. The second from the bottom addresses the strengthening of the local economy. And I I think that's something that as we continue to move forward with a strategic plan, just as a reminder, the EDC has already completed a strategic plan. It is very detailed and it's very specific on the task that they will be focusing on over the next several years. So that is something that I, in my opinion, council should also continue to focus on, especially in your dialogue with board members at the EDC and our executive director at the Economic Development Corporation as well. But this this slide also indicates that there's there's interest in a number and responses in a number of areas that you, as the council, have already heard and paid attention to and you're moving forward with. So if if we just start start at the bottom, you know, police services and EMS, fire EMS. One of the things that you have done over the last year plus is you considered market adjustments, compensation adjustments for those departments. You took the action and then actually put it on the ballot last year, and our voters approved that. So again, indicating that not only is council aware of what their priorities are, but our our voters actually showed with their votes what their priorities are as well. Street maintenance, understandably, that over the last month or so, we've had some very frequented town halls regarding our street maintenance utility, you'll be taking action on that tonight. Again, it's a priority for the community, finding the right way to address that is what council has been working on again. Parks and Recreation, we already talked about. Properties in the downtown and Business One Ninety, that's that's one of the areas that even you, as council, have talked to me about numerous times. How how do we, how do we help the investment into those properties? In other words, making them nicer, making them more aesthetic, more appealing for customers to go to. And that is occurring in the downtown area with a number of businesses that have gone down there. And then we got to drop down to the fourth bullet point. Plurality, plurality, thank you, Will, for putting that word in there. Christmas decorations. Again, city council took very specific action to fund Christmas decorations. And our Parks and Recreation team, along with the Chamber of Commerce, is developing a very robust Christmas and holiday decoration effort. It's it's not just going to be the city doing this, it is trying to gain support community-wide to have a place in town. And it's going to start this year with our, what what is it called, Kevin, in December, Christmas?
Christmas in the park.
Christmas in the park. And we're going to be able to highlight the decorations that are out there, bring the community out, engage and allow them a place to actually see those decorations. Moving Kris Kendelmark downtown last year was a really big improvement based on the attendees to that event. And they'll, the chamber will continue that event downtown also. Sidewalks, you've approved grant funding to enhance a number of sidewalks. And just so you know, that process is still continuing. We just received last week an additional request to further refine those applications that you approved, which means we are still in the running for those grants. And I can tell you, a number of regional communities have already been notified, they are not being considered. So that speaks well of the projects that we submitted also. The walking and biking trails, if you have not been out to Ogletree Gap to do the hiking trails, and I know Dell has for sure because he's walked with the lady with the goat. And forgive me for not knowing your name, ma'am, I I know she's out there somewhere. But it's, we we have some really amazing hiking trails out at Ogletree Gap. Again, economy is is a big one and capitalizing on our Economic Development Corporation and the efforts that they're doing. And you, as the governing body, have the responsibility of guiding and directing them on what efforts they should move forward with and what they should should be doing. Because you appoint those board members, those board members then give policy direction to the executive director and the team that's over there. And then the the last one there is, I I just think it's it's a really positive noting that we are still an affordable community and our military connection is clearly noted in that we are a safe and quiet community. And I think a lot of our residents actually appreciate that. And and I can tell you that I do in the decade-plus that I've been here, so. The whole survey is something that we will have a focus on on November fourteenth. November fourteenth is your strategic planning retreat. And that's where we will be working on developing our next strategic plan, which are those very focused few items that we need to have a strong push and effort to accomplish. And so keep in mind, and I'd encourage you to study the survey again over the next couple of weeks as we lead into November fourteenth so that we can be very prepared to develop that strategic plan. And in the next week, I will be asking council to do some homework, which is also in preparation for that retreat. So and and it's going to have, you'll have the ability to really focus on the survey and the responses that we received so that as we go through that strategic planning process, you are also being responsive to our community that is reflected in this survey. And that's all I had to say, Mayor. Kevin, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Sure, I have just a few more comments, Ryan. First and foremost, the goat lady is Dana and the goat is Goat Malone.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah. That's pretty good stuff. Thank you, Mayor, Council. First, I just wanted to thank the citizens that took the time to complete the survey because it is, can be a little time-consuming, ten to fifteen minutes to complete the survey. So thank you to those five hundred plus who took the initiative to do that, we're truly appreciative. I will, the presentation has previously been sent to y'all. And I'll work with IT this week, we'll get it uploaded on the website for the citizens to review, it'll be on the public relations page. And then lastly, I just want to thank Will for his professionalism and leadership, he's been amazing to work with. Personally, I've worked with Will for about twelve or thirteen years on surveys. And Will, I just want to say to you, thank you for your professionalism and your guidance getting through these surveys.
Thank you, Will. Anything else, Kevin?
My pleasure, you guys are great to work with.
Thank you, Will, you have a good evening.
All right.
Take care.
All right, if nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting, then the regular meeting will begin at six o'clock.